Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. To bang this thing right?
Yep.
I'm filling obviously for Mr. Russell today, so please be patient if I mess anything up. But we'll call it to order, and for those who care, please stand for opening prayer and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Andrew's gonna handle the prayer.
Sure. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight. We just pray that you'd guide and direct us as we take on the city's business, and we thank you for the favor you bestowed upon the city, and especially in weather challenges over the last couple of weeks that we've been able to fare fairly well. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will get started. The first process would be citizen participation. This is open citizen participation for anyone wishing to speak anything not on the agenda. We will hit the agenda items for citizen participation as they come up. Anyone that wish to discuss anything that's not on the agenda during citizen participation? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, I would welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about item one on the agenda. Any questions? If not, I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Seeing the first and a second, all those in favor? All those, I need a motion and a second. I guess we vote on that at this point, correct?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we have five, so if this passes, motion passes five to zero. Below this, we have Board Commissions and Committee Schedules. Board of Adjustments meeting, February 1st has been canceled. City Council Workshop will be February 6th at 5:00 PM, followed by City Council meeting after that. Planning zoning meeting, February 12th, and the second City Council meeting will be February 20th. Moving on to old business and table items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-01 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Laura, can you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City Council amending the employee handbook.
Any updates from staff?
No updates.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council or discussion? Seeing no questions, I will now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-01.
Motion.
Second.
Seeing a motion and a second, looks like we'll now take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion passes five to zero. Item three, need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-02 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Laura, can you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City Council approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Southern Missouri Professional Firefighters Local 152, the bargaining unit of the Republic Fire Department, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the same on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates. Any questions from council? Seeing no questions, we can move to final passage. I will now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-02.
Motion.
Second.
With the motion and a second, we'll now take a roll call vote on the computers. Motion carries five to zero. Item four, I'll need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-03 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
With the motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes five to zero. Laura, can you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .29 acres of real property located at 1167 North Oakwood Avenue from Agricultural AG to General Commercial C2.
Thank you. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates. Any questions or concerns from council? Seeing none, I will now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-03.
Motion.
Second.
The motion is second, we will now do a roll call vote on our computers. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item five, 24-04, I'll need a motion and a second for second reading of Bill 24-04 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Laura, can you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 1.08 acres of real property located at 505 Westbrook Field Street, from General Commercial C2 to multifamily residential R3.
Thank you. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates. Any question from council? Seeing no questions, we will move to final passage. Can I please have a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-04?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Having a motion and a second, we will now take a roll call vote. Motion passes five to zero. Now we're moving on to new business. I need a, sorry, when do we do citizen participation on this? Is it the beginning, or do we get the motion?
After staff.
After staff, okay. I will need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-05 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five to zero. Laura, can you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title III, Chapter 300, Section 300.020, definitions, and adding new Section 340.125, Golf Carts and Utility Task Vehicles, to Title III, Chapter 340 of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you. We have Sergeant Richards here to discuss the ordinance.
Good evening, I'm Sergeant Richards, Republic Police Department. The reason we're bringing this to you guys tonight is because we've had a lot of ongoing citizen complaints about the use of golf carts and UTVs on city streets, so we've responded to several calls for the following reasons: children operating them, operators not following traffic regulations, operating them at night with no lights, and several incidents of operating under the influence of alcohol. I've seen kids who can't even sit in the seat and drive, they've had to stand up and drive them when I've been out there. We are aware that there are subdivisions like Schuler Ridge that were outside the city limits when Republic took them over, so they purchased homes, bought expensive golf carts and UTVs. For that reason, we chose not to completely restrict the use of golf carts and UTVs. Our goal is to allow the use of both, but regulate how they're being used for the safety of the neighborhood. So we're gonna allow the purchase of a permit, and as long as they follow the regulations of following this ordinance, it'll be good. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them.
Counsel, have any questions?
Cut off easy.
Can I make a statement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
So I just want to say thank you to the leadership within the police department about this, because I know that it's so easily just to do away with them completely. And in these common, in these subdivisions that have common areas where they're driving them from the house to the common areas, to the pools and trails and stuff like that, I just think it's really neat that we're working with the citizens, giving them an avenue to do this in a way, as long as they follow these regulations, instead of just cutting them off completely. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? We do have citizen participation on this, Mr. Henson. Please come up, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Say that again?
Do your name and address, and then you have three minutes to talk.
Richard Lee Henson, my address is 105 Long Drive. I've done here in the Island Green neighborhood. I think this is gonna be kind of an onerous situation. I have no idea what's going on in the rest of the city, but I just spent two years on the HOA Board of Directors, and I heard no discussion, no complaints, and no issues with the use of golf carts in our streets. I personally use 200 feet of city street before I drive onto the golf course. So there's some issues in here that I think that are gonna be a real problem, that are really gonna cause most of my neighbors just to ignore you, which I've told you, I quote Andrew's high school principal. If we're gonna have a rule, we're gonna enforce it, and if we're not gonna enforce it, we're not gonna have a rule. So it really, it occurs to me, if we want, it wouldn't be better served to split golf carts and UTVs, or what I really think is an easy solution here, is to, if we can accept streets where they cannot be used, Main, Heinz, Elm, all of which makes sense, then we can also accept streets where it's really a non-issue and they can be used, as long as they're used in a safe manner. I mean, if you policemen see somebody driving like an idiot, they should be pulled over. And to that extent, I would recommend that you accept all of the streets in the Island Green neighborhood. I won't list them off for you, you can find them, I have them right here, they're in Justin's Ward. Some other issues that I think you're gonna run into, that I have a problem with, is buying a separate insurance policy for these vehicles. Mine is covered under my homeowner's liability, that allows me to drive it on the golf course, protects the golf course. Second, an inspection. I'm not 100% sure how you want me to bring that thing in to be inspected, whether I go get a trailer and bring it up, or you're gonna send somebody out, I think is an issue you need to work through. Seat belts, there's no seat belts in my golf cart, nor will there ever be. When I was a farmer, as Andrew can attest in his old world, I had ATVs and UTVs also, no seat belts. So if you say must-have seat belts, the little straddle kind of ATVs like I used, they're completely out. So those are issues. I think the policemen are doing a great job in our community, I wanna say that, I wanna support their issues. If this is an issue somewhere on the streets, I wonder if it might not be better served as, to be covered under a nuisance driving or something, instead of covering a whole separate issue. That and the ongoing $15 fee and inspection process seems like excessively onerous to me. I wonder if you might not consider overall, at very minimum, split the two things out. Although I think the easiest route, accept the neighborhood. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Any other citizen participation? Welcome. If you please state your name and your address, please.
My name's Jeff Johnson, I live at 1147 North Boston Lane, on the last house, the city limit sign is in my driveway. I've lived there over 30 years. I just don't see it, where I'm at. I just don't. I understand where the issue is at. There is one neighborhood in Republic that has a really big social atmosphere, and that's where all the problems are. I do have a golf cart, my wife drives the golf cart, my wife has had major health issues for years. She will get on Boston Lane, which is one of the streets that is listed, to go to the cottages to visit, she's got some friends up there. So I don't like this ordinance because of my personal situation. If I pull out of my driveway and I go to the left, I can drive the golf cart anywhere I want. If I go to the right, then I'm in violation of city ordinance. I can get on my tractor, and I can drive it anywhere in Republic, and I'm legal. I can do whatever I want. Lived here so long, I still see Republic as kind of a small-town feel, and I know that that's changed, and it's just a reality of it. But to blanket, you know, just totally shotgun this whole thing because we're having major issues in one neighborhood, kinda bothers me, because if there's an elderly gentleman that drives his lawnmower pulling a cart on Pine Street to Casey's and fills up with gas, is he in violation? You know, I mean, we're, this isn't Bella Vista, we're not, you know, we don't have, I don't have a lifted golf cart, I'm not driving a Razor on the streets, and I understand that needs a stop, and I understand they're having accidents in certain part of town. I hate it that the police has to deal with that, but I don't think we should do it citywide, and that there should be, as he mentioned, that, and if you're drunk driving a golf cart, you should be taken to jail, same as you would. I'm just speaking from my own personal situation. In my area of town, I just don't see it. I don't see it necessarily.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other citizen participation? Gary, give.
In the ordinance, if it passes, and if you're pulled over and fined illegal, the fines can be from $200 to $450, just so you're aware.
Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Sergeant Richards. Is it mainly Schuler Ridge where we're seeing complaints, or are there other subdivisions that?
They're definitely probably the main culprit, but we do have other neighborhoods that we had issues too, and they're not the only one. So trying to diseliminate that one neighborhood would be impossible.
Sure.
Could I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
I need to.
Yeah, if you don't care, so we can hear it for record.
Are there already?
State statutes? To cover driving UTVs and stuff on public roadways?
There are, there are certain provisions in the state code that apply under certain circumstances.
So we already have mechanism that, to enforce this?
Not necessarily. I mean, if you were to get cited with a violation of state law, that would be prosecuted in the Circuit Court of Green County, up in Springfield, so kind of like the big kid court, essentially. This is, local ordinance is just more local regulation, less fines, lower penalties, more, it's easier to enforce with our local police department.
But if you're under 16 and you're driving a motor vehicle on a city street, I assume that's illegal?
Under certain circumstances, correct, yes.
Okay, and if you're intoxicated, driving a motor vehicle, whether it be a scooter, a golf cart, or a lawnmower on a city street, that's illegal?
Yes, it can be DWI.
So there's several things already in place to deal with this. I know, I know, I've been out there plenty around town, but I don't see it as a citywide issue.
I understand.
Any other questions or comments from council? Thanks for coming and talking, you know, this is what these are for, the first readings, this will have a second reading, so we appreciate the input, and feel free to reach out with any further questions. And again, remember, this is the first reading, so if you have any questions, please feel free to get with staff before the next meeting, we'll have it again, so. Moving on to 24-06, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-06 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Laura, can you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the city to participate in the Missouri Firefighters' Critical Illness Trust and Pool, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the necessary documentation to secure the city's participation.
Thank you. Chief Compton?
Good evening, Dwayne Compton, Fire Chief for the City of Republic. This critical illness pool, a little bit of a history here, how this got started. It started in 2021, Missouri was one of the last states in the nation to have a pool like this for first responders. In 2020, in '21, it developed or changed some state laws that allowed this pool to be set up. In '22, they come back with an amendment to that, and then it set the guidelines and the framework for the critical illness pool and how it's to be set up. Last year, they come back with another amendment, Senator Lincoln Huff come back with Senate Bill 45, and it added $5 million in state funding to the pool so that it would get it started and going. And so at that point, membership started coming onboard, because previously, there was no funds in the pool, in case you had a claim. So with that amendment and that $5 million seed money, it also added to the pool, it's basically been for firefighters for critical illness, which was cancer as defined, and he added post-traumatic stress disorder, and it also added that also, the telecommunicators or the dispatchers, we don't have a dispatch center anymore, and it also added the EMS workers that work on the ambulance, not the people employed in the hospital, but the people in the field on the ambulance, be covered as well under this pool. So the PTSD part of it, it's kind of a work in progress, the cancer part of it is spelled out real clear because of that amendment last year, and there's some legislation pending this year that will play the guide word for it. Probably gonna ask, the first thing, your question you're gonna ask is why does work comp not cover this if we're diagnosed with cancer? The way workers' comp is set up, it's kind of a, it's not immediate, but it's something, action has to take place immediately to activate the process to start the claim. So if I slip on the ice and break an ankle, gotta hope I don't have it. It immediately starts the whole process with your employer, you gotta fill out paperwork, you're going to the doctor, so on, as we all know. With the critical illness and the cancer, there's no, you're exposed, but it may not show up two, three years later until illness pops up. And the same thing with the post-traumatic stress disorder, you may have something happen, and there may be another event that's very traumatic that happens on scene, and at that point, you're done, you gotta go get some help. So that's how this pool was set up. It's 17 different types of cancer that is included, and those are defined by a national agency that puts firefighters at risk. The most people that end up with cancer in the fire service is in and around the throat and the neck, and that comes from the protective hoods that we wear. There's two of you that have previous experience in the fire service, and you know you pull that hood off, and it lays right around your neck. There's also with this, by joining this, we're requesting to buy in at the $300,000 level, which is the maximum amount, and that does not mean if we file a claim, they're going to just hand you $300,000. That's the maximum amount it can pay out. So what happens is they'll diagnose what type of cancer that you have or been diagnosed, and what probability of recovery is, or if it's gonna be a long-term deal. And then they'll administer several payments as you go along. Payments are designed to help offset the cost that a person's going to incur, it's not going to pay all your medical expenses. If you need to go out of state for cancer treatment, or somewhere down to Tulsa, there's a cancer hospital there that's well-known, it helps pay for those additional costs. This was included in this year's budget. The staff cost is $165 per person, or $4,789 a year. We've also included some extra funds in your budget in anticipation of hiring some additional people as well. This was something that was in the firefighter's contract that both the city and the firefighters thought was beneficial for. Questions? Because I'm not that good.
I'm assuming the way the pool works is that if you're, if you're in, you're in, and if you're not in?
That's it. You're out. You're standing on the outside looking in. So locally, the only fire department's bought in is Springfield, this is coming before Branson City Council this month as well, and us, and then there's a couple other ones that are starting to get onboard. So there's several of them starting. Now that the seed money's in there, and there'll be more money this year, now that if we have a claim, we can get something back, but previously, we weren't getting anything back, and so nobody was paying into it, which is understandable.
Any other questions? You did, I think you mentioned, again, this was already in the budget that we've?
Yeah, it's in the budget, we included it, and it's something like both parties, we feel this is beneficial to both parties. Little bit about, real quick, back history, the history of workers' comp in Missouri, they've only paid on two cancer claims. At the time, they paid both of those people deceased. So they've never paid on a cancer claim for a firefighter that was actively on duty. That's what this fund is for.
Yep. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Any citizen comments? And again, remember, this is the first read, so if you have any questions, please get with the staff before the next meeting. We're moving on to other business resolutions. Mr. Ford is gonna be presenting the finance report.
Good evening, Bob Ford, Finance Director. I put a copy of this, this presentation at your chair, just give you a chance to look at it, some of the numbers get a little small. I don't want to spend a lot of time going through this tonight, as you know, we're, the year, fiscal '23 is behind us, we're in the process of closing the year out. We'll be starting our audit process, we have our first meeting with the auditors coming up next Friday, and we'll kick that this season off, but I wanted to give you an idea of where we're ending the year, from a preliminary but firm perspective. So if you, and I'm sorry for the small numbers, so that luckily, like I said, you've got the information in front of you, but in general, let me just give you a couple highlights. One, for the year, we ended up about $2.7 million better than budget. Now, once again, a big chunk of that is underspending our capital program, which means we're gonna push those dollars into next year. And as you know, we have started breaking our budget into two components, both operating and capital. So let's talk about the revenue side of the operating budget. So city sales taxes were less than budget, we've talked about that kind of numerous times over the last year. However, we only missed about $130,000 versus budget on city sales taxes, but alternatively, property taxes and other taxes, for instance, the Green County Law Enforcement Sales Tax and others, in fact, made up, more than made up, for the loss on the city sales tax front. So if you look at this terribly hard-to-read box on the right-hand side, I'm gonna point you to two specific boxes that I've highlighted. One is revenue in total from external sources, so this would be city sales taxes, taxes from other sources, property taxes, utility billing, fees, et cetera. The far right-hand column is showing $461,000 better than budget. And once again, we break this revenue component out into both what we refer to as external revenue sources, so real dollars into the city. There are also other revenue sources that are really more transfer in nature. So think about when the general fund transfers money from the general fund to the police department, it's revenue to the police fund, it's an expense to the general fund, but in the, in the process of consolidation, that gets eliminated. And so we break those components out and call it internal revenue versus external revenue. So same thing on the expense side, expenses and capital expenses. Expenses and capital expenditures were less than budget primarily on the expense side, on the operating side, on the compensation side, because we, we budgeted for X number of jobs to be filled during the year. And one, those jobs were either not filled or they were filled later in the year. And so we kept that, that expense down throughout the year. So once again, I've highlighted that external expenses were better than budget by $877,000. So those two numbers are the numbers you need to focus on, on the operating side. We're better on the, on the operating revenue side and we're better on the operating expense side. Additionally, you'll also notice that on the operating revenue side, we're about $140,000 better on interest income. Once again, because on the capital spend, we were slower to spend money on the capital side, that left the money in the bank account longer and that money that's set in the bank account longer generated more interest income. So net-net, we, on the operating side, we came in about $1.2 million better than what we had budgeted for. On the capital side, we underspent our capital budget by about $12 million, which just means we're going to leave that money in the bank account, which is going to help us on the interest income side, but we're going to spend that money next year. Moving on to the next page, we're not going through these numbers. I wanted to give you, Lisa's laughing because she's telling me I need to move along here. But I wanted to give you a perspective by fund and by department on how revenues and expenses came into the city. Once again, this ties back to the preliminary numbers on, on page two on the middle column, on the actuals column. So once again, if you have trouble sleeping, it's, it's a great insomnia protection. Moving on to city sales taxes, I wanted to give you at least a perspective because we've talked a lot about city sales taxes over the last year. They were underperforming. But in reality, if you look at city sales taxes, city sales taxes have increased year over year over year over year. And they did so in '23 as compared to '22. But once again, city sales taxes ended the year in '23, $436,000 better than '22 due to a full year of the public safety sales tax. So remember in '22, we didn't have a full year. So if I back out the public safety, public safety, safety sales tax out of the '22 numbers and out of the '23 numbers and normalize those, that data, we were actually flat year over year, about $78,000 under '22's numbers when you back out or normalize public safety sales tax numbers. And so therefore, we ended the year from a budget perspective, so not compared to '22, but compared to our budget, we missed it by about $130,000 bucks. Once again, just to reiterate, property and other sales taxes more than made up for it. Property taxes were better by $228,000 for the year and other taxes were better by about This brings me to where we ended the year from a cash perspective. We ended the year at, with about $52 million in total cash sitting on the balance sheet as of December 31. 13.7 million of that was unrestricted, so 26% of that balance was unrestricted. $8.3 million set in the general fund and $5.4 million set across the other funds of the city. The important thing to recognize here is that, as you would expect, given the fact that operating income was up and expenses were down in '23, we saw an increase in the general fund's cash balance year over year of about $2 million. 1.8 million was assigned and so these are dollars that are, they're assigned for a specific purpose. They need to be spent for that purpose. Call them quasi-restricted. And then we had $36 million at the end of the year that were restricted primarily around three areas. The wastewater project, the pool and the parks projects, as you remember, we raised $9.9 million in March to help fund that. And then 5.1 million, $5.1 million spread across the other funds throughout the city. Moving on from cash, so the asset side of the balance sheet, moving to the debt side of the balance sheet, we ended the year, well, we began fiscal '23 on January 1 with $53 million of debt outstanding. During the year, we took a draw on the, the MM Highway project, so we, an initial $2 million came into the city, currently sitting in a bank account, drawing interest. We also issued the Series 23 bonds, $9.9 million. So you saw $11.9 million of inflow or an increase in debt. But we also paid off $3.4 million of debt during the year. Paid off $1 million on the Sawyer property, which was, it's ultimately going to be a park for the city. That debt is now totally paid for. We also paid off $1.2 million of the Series 22 bond offering. So we're starting to make those principal payments on the debt. Once again, jumping over to the right-hand side of this schedule, I've broken out the principal payment and the interest expense related to each one of those specific debt issuances that gets us back to our $5.5 million of total debt service for '23. Last but not least, I wanted to leave you with at least a perspective on debt service. You'll notice on the left-hand side of this page, there's, there's a year and then there's an amount. So for '23, the debt amount, the debt service amount was $5.5 million. We just talked about that. And it's made up of the activity that's spread across this waterfall schedule. The important thing to note here is that '23 is the high watermark in terms of debt service and will start to gradually tick away year over year over year. Once again, however, we do have a fairly hefty debt service requirement in the upcoming, primarily the next eight to 10 years. So in, in a nutshell, one, we have cash on the books. We generated more interest income than we budgeted for. We generated more operating revenue than we budgeted for. We saved on the expense side. We underspent our capital budget, but we'll spend that in 2024. We paid off $3.4 million of debt this year and a high watermark on the debt service was this year and we'll start to see it decline going forward. Any questions?
Questions from council? So the expenses were less than expected, income was higher.
Two good things.
2.7 to the?
Two good things.
Yes. Thank you for putting this together. I know it's a very complex process and thank you for explaining it. And then this will be on the website too.
We will.
Yep. I encourage you, anyone that hasn't done that, Mr. Ford and, and the staff's done a great job of putting a lot of information out there on the website. So if you want to nerd out on the numbers, they're out there.
And feel free to, if you want to, give me a call. I'm happy to walk you through it.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you. Moving on to reports from other staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you don't, haven't noticed, we've got a few absences tonight, so B-team JV, I'm not sure.
We're the 18.
18. Yeah, I like that. But one specific I want to call attention to, Mr. Franklin lost his father over the past week and we just want to, you know, give our condolences to him. If you know him very well, he's not absent a whole lot. So for him to be gone tonight, we know that, that was a big deal for him. So condolences to Mr. Franklin. Next week, the workshop preceding the council meeting will be over the wastewater project. Hopefully the last in the series of the wastewater issue. We're going to make some major strides there, so I'm looking forward to that. David made a trip to Jeff City last week to visit with the legislator on numerous issues, wastewater being one of them for the city. We are going back again next week on Wednesday for the Salute to Legislators for South West Real quick, I sent an email to the council regarding Main Street and last Friday, we had an opportunity to meet with about 19, 20 students from Drury's Architectural Program and we've actually engaged with them to work on a project to help us advance Main Street as part of the 2017 Capital Improvement Sales Tax. We, we had pledged 370, I think is the number, Jared, to improvements on Main Street. And so they're, they're going to help us with that, help us look at, because one thing I'll tell you is 370,000 is not going to get it. Like it's not going to give us the program that I believe that the community desires. So there's going to be engagement on their part. I've encouraged them to reach out to the, to the mayor, to the council for input. We'll have public meetings that will be published for the community to come out and, and engage in what, what does preserving or honoring or improving Main Street look like to the community and how do we, how do we tackle it? So in, in addition to that, we did issue the contract to demo the building at 213. So that building will, will come down in the, the coming weeks as well. We'll get information on that, about impacts to the city. Winter weather yesterday was sketchy at best if you got out in the morning. So I appreciate the police, the fire, the public works staff that were out tackling the roads. I went through the, the city really early and one of the officers had stopped to assist somebody in the ditch and was literally skating across 60 Highway to get to him. So I appreciate all those people that were out there taking that on. That, that's all I have.
Any other reports from staff? Any reports from council? Made it easy. Okay. Thanks everyone for being patient. Obviously, I'm filling in for Matt. Thanks Laura for writing this that I don't mess up too bad. So thanks for all the assistance that came out and participated. Really appreciate you guys taking the time and effort to come out and express your concerns. Again, I would just echo what Andrew said, appreciate all the staff that was out with the cold from the police force. I know we had some water, main issues, so appreciate everyone out there and staying safe. And again, echo, thank you to Mr. Franklin and his family. And that's all, all I have. And with that, we don't-